Good evening, welcome to all. I'd like to call this July 21 Zion City Council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here. Mr. Bremer, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
Please join in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir. Our allegiance to the flag from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next offering our prayer tonight is Matt Kearney from the Evangelistic Association. Matt, good to see you again. Hope you've been safe and your family's been healthy during this pandemic.
Yes, thank you. Let us bow our heads in prayer. God, you are a gracious God who is slow to anger and abounding in loving kindness. We thank you for that. And we thank you for those who are doing good in our community, our first responders, our city employees, our school staff, our businesses, our churches and other nonprofits. Please provide for us, keep us healthy, give wisdom about the school year. And we pray for the people of Zion who call it home and want to see the city prosper. Lastly, I thank you for those on this council who have sacrificed so much and worked tirelessly not only to run the city but to see it grow. We humbly ask for your divine wisdom and inspiration to guide their conversations and the decisions they make. Tonight, we ask for your blessing on this city. Give us your hope, your peace, and help this city prosper so that all may be blessed. Amen.
Thank you, Matt. Matt Kearney from the Evangelistic Association. As we move forward on the agenda, I would like to offer a moment of silence for Congressman John Lewis. John Lewis passed away at 80 due to pancreatic cancer and has been a giant in the civil rights movement in our country. And as I was growing up as a young man right in the midst of the civil rights movement, 1964, the Voting Rights, the Civil Rights Act and then Voting Rights Act, he was right in the midst of it as a young man at 26 years old, organizing sit-ins in the John Crow South, being part of the Freedom Rite of that rode throughout the country, protest at bus stops. He truly was a giant of a man that spent his entire life committed to racial equality and justice in our country, at a time when it wasn't popular, at a time when there was a protest that the protester that wanted all of our citizen black Americans to have voting rights and civil rights, that they were sprayed by water holes, they were bitten by dogs, they were beaten by the authorities and the people empowered that did not want to see this change in America, a country where all men are supposed to be created equal. So as he rests, as I've looked at people throughout the course of my lifetime and I've looked up to people, it's people like that that have committed their lives and willing to give their lives to a cause to make our country what it was promised to be from the outset. It's because of people like him and so many people that supported the civil rights movement, which is born again right now, that allowed someone like me to have the opportunities in my life that I've had throughout the course of my lifetime and the other African-Americans as well. So if we would give Congressman Lewis a moment of silence and hope that the younger generation that are here will continue his commitment and those that are committed to equality and racial justice in our United States of America, maybe bow our heads. Thank you very much. Item number four, with any of our commissioners, do we have any agenda changes? Is there a motion to present the agenda? So moved. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number five, public hearing, annexation agreement, is there a motion to open the public hearing? So moved. Second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Jerry Callahan is a representative and attorney with Advanced Disposal. He's going to give us a presentation here to talk about what this annexation agreement means.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the Commission. As mentioned, I represent Advanced Disposal Services, which is the operator of the Zion landfill and has been for about the last 20 years. Prior to that, it was Brown and Ferris Industries. And the landfill was acquired from Brown and Ferris some 20 years ago by the predecessor of the Mans. The annexation this evening is for 10 parcels, which are essentially residential parcels on the west side of Kenosha Road. And they lie in Kenosha Road and they're just east of the 110 acres that you annexed about a year ago, a little more than a year ago, the Wyler Nursery. The 15 acres are not proposed for waste disposal, however, and by the way, we're not asking this evening for you to approve the siding of a landfill expansion. That comes in a separate proceeding. We haven't filed an application yet. That's being prepared. So at that point, it's got to come before you in a formal public hearing. What we're asking you to do is to annex these 15 acres. They will be incorporated into the overall landfill operation but not used for waste disposal. They are going to be used for, and they're critical to the operation in that, berms will be placed, those houses will be, assuming the expansion is approved by the Commission, the houses will be raised and berms will be put in, landscaping will be put in. I think the berms undulate, they go from 10 to 30 feet. They'll have landscaping on them. And so the idea is to provide screening from the east to the west. So it's important in the sense that it will be part of the overall landfill operation, providing screening and buring and buffer. Now, under the annexation agreement that is before you, the company is asking that they be allowed to keep the houses until the expansion is going forward, if it goes forward. So they will continue to be operated. They'll be subject to the city's requirements for inspection and leasing and all that. You have, I know you have regulations. In fact, I believe at the hearing, the evening of the hearing last year for the 110 acres, I think the new ordinance went into effect in the city. So these parcels will be subject to that, those controls of the city. So as I mentioned, this is not a request for an approval of landfill. It's simply to bring these properties into the city so that they can be incorporated into the overall siding application, which will be coming in the future. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. But that's it in a nutshell. It's a fairly simple annexation.
So you're the owner of the properties and you are requesting annexation?
Yes, I represent the owner.
Yeah, right. Is there any property along here that you don't own?
Yes.
Could you mark it for me, please?
Let me give you a plan. And by the way, the company did try to buy everything but was not able to. So I'll give you, this is a plan of annexation and it shows you what is being annexed. And you see, everything that's shaded dark is being, is proportionated. Now, the company does own, I think it may own some others, but it's not, it doesn't work in the overall.
The map that we had just wasn't very clear.
Okay. If you want that, you can.
Okay, thanks. Additional questions from council members?
One question about the eventual berm design. Is it primarily for aesthetic purposes or is there some consideration of constructing the berms in such a fashion to help mitigate overflow of loose materials and odors?
Well, I think it'll serve all those purposes. I mean, it's going to be a screening berm.
Okay.
So, you know, to block visibility of the landfill operations. You may know that behind some of those southerly lots, there is a substantial stand of trees. That's going to remain as well. There'll be fencing around the landfill to intercept blowing litter and things like that. They also have, you know, people that go out and pick up litter that may blow around. I don't know if it, you know, I can't tell you from an engineering perspective whether it will have any effect on mitigating odors. I really couldn't say. I think it will help with noise. I know that birmingham is often used for noise mitigation.
Right. Thank you. Well, that, obviously, that will be a consideration when we get to the siding process in the future.
Yeah, of course. And we'll have people that can speak to those technical issues.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Callahan, the question I have is, Advanced Disposal will keep the properties? They own the properties there?
They own, yeah.
And how will the houses be maintained and who will maintain them?
The company will maintain them. They're leasing them out and the annexation agreement specifically says the city's maintenance ordinance and tenant protection ordinance will apply to those parcels.
Okay. Are there additional questions from our council regarding the annexation? Are there any comments from the public? Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Are there any comments from the public or questions from the public about this annexation and what it means?
I would imagine, excuse me, Mayor, I would imagine the representation of people in the crowd are predominantly from Zion. The last time we did this, there were a lot of people from Winthrop Harbor.
Yes.
Is there anybody in the crowd from Winthrop Harbor?
All right. Without questions or comments from the public, is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing? So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number six is citizens' comments. We really appreciate everyone coming out to our city council meetings and being involved with what's going on in our city. We just want to reiterate a couple of facts about public comments. All public comments will be limited to three minutes. Under the Open Meeting Act, there is no requirement that a response to a public comment be given, but in the unusual circumstances that a response is merited, one will be provided. The city has a general policy to not comment on employment, litigation, or other related issues. So with that, Mr. Bremer?
Mayor McKinney, honorable sirs, gentle ladies, I stand before you this evening to thank you for the Blackbird connection. It does work. When it first got discussed in this, here, I gave my home land telephone number to Administrator Knabel. He signed me up. I don't have a computer. I'm a troglodyte. I don't understand computers. But since then, I've been contacted three times through that system, once for the boil order when water pipes broke, once when the boil order was secured and we could again use our water, and then last week, I guess it was apparently a truck hit a utility pole on Sheridan, about 34th Street, and Sheridan was road blocked for a while. And while Commonwealth Edison came in and deactivated the wires or whatever they had to do. So the system does work. I thank you all for getting it installed. And I do thank you for your attention this evening. Permission to stand down, sir?
Permission granted. Thank you, Mr. Bremer. Mary Lou Hilterbrand?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. I would like to give you a report of the activities of ESDA for the first six months of 2020. From January through June, ESDA volunteers have contributed 1,044 hours of time to the city. We have assisted police, fire, and other city departments. We have helped to control traffic for accidents, fires, down power lines, trees in the road, and in other ways. ESDA volunteers have controlled traffic for Abiding Love Food Pantry every Wednesday during this COVID situation. We have assisted Humanity First with traffic for food pantries at the leisure center as they helped feed persons with needs during COVID. The 1,044 hours given by ESDA volunteers multiplied by the current rate cited for volunteer work have saved the city $26,567.99 in man-hours. In addition to assisting other departments, we also put in time maintaining the upkeep of our equipment and making replacements for damaged or worn-out barricades and other things necessary to do the work. ESDA is a volunteer department with oversight under the fire chief. If you are interested in donating time to do good in our city, fill out an application on the city website. We are always interested in new members. Thank you for your support.
Thank you for the work that you do. The only question I have, do we get one of those snazzy shirts?
Come out and stand on the street corner, Mayor, as I shirt my off.
All right. Reverend Matt Kearney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members. Like you said, I'm Reverend Matt Kearney and I have a ministry called Transformation. I do a lot of outreach in the area, also speaking on behalf of the Zion Veteran Ministerial Alliance, Association. And I'm also one of the co-writers of the petition for properly addressing the three-fifths compromise in the U.S. Constitution. For those not familiar with the compromise, it was a part of the founding of our nation that sought to take voting power away from slave-owning states in the South by calling slaves three-fifths of a person when it comes to votes. The power of the compromise was taken away when slavery was abolished by the 13th Amendment, except in incarceration, and was replaced by the wording in the 14th Amendment after the Civil War. However, after having conversations with black friends of mine in ministry, it became clear to me that this is still a wound for many black people around our country and has been a discussion for many of us in ministry here in Zion. Now is the time to address this. In our research, it became clear that the wording of the 14th Amendment that replaced the three-fifths compromise was rather weak in its condemnation of it in comparison to other amendments such as the repealing of the prohibition of alcohol. We believe stronger, more reconciliatory language is necessary. Lastly, the three-fifths compromise in Article 1, Section 2, that is page 1 of the U.S. Constitution, is still displayed, first on the federal government's website of the Constitution and the National Archives, with clarity lacking that this abhorrent law is no longer, no longer has any governing power. Instead, you either have to scroll down through the entire Constitution or click on a hyperlink that directs you to the 14th Amendment. For men and women of every race who seek to defend and uphold the U.S. Constitution, this is not right. Let me be clear, we are not seeking to erase or revise history, but for the most important living governing document in our nation, the amended language should be displayed first or in more clarity and stronger language and should be given, should be given on the constitutional websites that this three-fifths compromise no longer governs us. As a follower of Jesus Christ, I'm glad that when people look at me, they don't see my past sins. They see my redeemed character. And it should be the same with the U.S. Constitution. In closing, we are calling for a discussion by the US Congress and national leaders on the three-fifths compromise in the U.S. Constitution. And I hope that you, as a council, will endorse this for evolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Kearney? Kathy Champagne?
Good evening. I'm here with a complaint and with a solution. My complaint is traffic on Sheridan Road. I was at It's All Good last week and during the time I was there, a flatbed hauling a big tractor went by and that was the one that took out the overhead cable. He sure looked like he was speeding. A little bit later, a guy got into his truck and he was heading, facing south and he did a U-turn to go north. And then after that, I mean, I couldn't believe I was seeing this, a semi-truck did a U-turn in the middle of Sheridan Road in front of Cali's. This is crazy. People are going to get hurt or killed. So I think the solution is traffic cams. I think that the city should put traffic cameras, at least on Sheridan Road during the business district. I don't think it's practical if they have police there day around, around the clock, watching for speeders and people who do dumb things in traffic, put a camera there, stop some of that awful behavior. And if you make money off it, great. I don't see traffic cameras as a substitute for police. I see them as a supplement to the police department to free the officers to have more interactions with people instead of sitting in their car looking for people who are doing dumb things. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Al Rogers?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Your opening statement about John Lewis was commendable and I thank you for that. I can remember the first time I ever stood in these council chambers as a 19-year-old college student, the day that Dave Fisher passed away. And there was a debate on who was going to fulfill his seat. David L. Fisher was one of the greatest icons here in the city of Zion as I was growing up. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to ride by the David L. Fisher Police Station here in the city of Zion. And for those of you who don't know, the police station currently is named David L. Fisher Police Station. And what caught my attention, even though I've seen the name on that building ever since they put the name on the building, there was a banner that said, "Black Lives Matter" and our police department supports that. Chief, thank you. Council, thank you. Because it's not to say that all lives don't matter, but in our current state where we are, there is some discussion on if black lives matter, and especially when it comes within law enforcement. But to see that on our police department directly across from David L. Fisher, who was a giant African-American man, and many of you don't live here or have, I'm from here. So to understand the meaning of David L. Fisher and Black Lives Matter on our police station, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Item number seven, special presentation, word art exhibit project, Kim Whiteside?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Kim Whiteside, resident of Zion. I do everything backwards. Let's see, I went to Chicago and I seen this word art and it said, "You are beautiful." And that just like, it was really awesome. It just like stood out and it was just alive and it was like really cool. So I come back here and I talked to somebody and they said, "Why don't you go with it?" I said, "Okay." So I found somebody to pay for it and everything and I got the signs made up and who would have thought there's a doggone ordinance for that? There's an ordinance for everything. So I am here to beg you, please, to see if we can get a variance on it. It could be a part of the art beat of Zion because it is just, I don't know, it just pops. It's just, it's simple, it's, I don't know what to say. Next time I'll see about the rules first and then, everything I do, there's a rule. I don't know. Do you guys got one of these?
Yes, yes, we do.
That's what it is. And they're all in, those are all over, not just Chicago, but all over the United States in different towns and cities. They have done this, it's a project they got going. And I thought we could do it. Okay, so it's up to you guys. Please think about it. Sherri Hilton, you gonna say anything?
Just to share with everybody, so Kim came to me with this idea after things were printed. And, no, well, that's not true. She came to me in the beginning and then she came to me again after they were printed. So in between, I didn't know she was running that part of that. And I just wanted to commend her, that Kim, her heart is so in this community and it's so meaningful as well. And that she found the locations that are all on a private property. She found the funding for it. She found the printers. She did all of the work just because it brought her joy to see that and just realizing how many people in our community don't think they're beautiful and being willing to share the hostage. And so when she brought that to me, then, you know, I thought about all that other people that have come to me with different ideas about art things that they wanted to do in the community, but the city is like this big boogeyman. They don't know how to get through it or what to do, so they don't do anything. And so started talking to everybody and we came up with the idea of the earth, you know, and raising the earth in our community. And so I just started like writing down the names of different people that had different ideas and New York, I think you're the only one that has the catalyst. So these are just, and not to freak out the whole, the top half are things that are already going out of this community. And then the bottom half are just a pool of ideas that the different people shared with, that they would like to be able to see happen in the community. And just, Elena and Julia are part of that. And then this, Mariam, thank you. No, it's not. Ms. Ba. She's a part of, she actually applied to be part of the mural contest and she's helping with another project, which is number, oh, I took up the numbers, the last bullet in the first segment, project that will be with Park District. And then, I guess you have to put it right now.
I have a question.
Yeah.
What's the difference between a mural and a sign?
A mural is painted, right? And a sign is something that you post up.
I know that.
So yes, yeah, that's a really good question, right? Yeah, was I supposed to get an ordinance for painting the mural on the, oh, the National Museum of Art? Rich. Dave bought it for it, so. So anyway, so just doing those different things. And just as Kim is the front runner in this again, really, it's my intention to just hold the space for anybody that has ideas and just help direct them, you know, if they talk to a Johnson or, or give a naval first or who they need to like connect with, with any of the ideas, just to help so that they can begin to feel empowered.
I'd like to connect you guys with a woman that recently, she and her husband recently moved to Zion. She participated in Mokegan's art walk. She participated in Mokegan's Art Walk, and I'll put you in touch with her.
And when you talk about people to contact, one of the people you talked about, Director Rich Ionsen with the Building Department, I don't see Rich here this evening. Oh, he's hiding, he's always hiding. He was hiding from me because you asked some questions for you. And Commissioner Jackie Holmes, who is the Commissioner of Building Property and Zoning, and of course, our City Administrator, David Nabel. Do our commissioners have any comments or questions about this project?
Supervisor Neil and I had a long conversation about this earlier today. I think the idea has a lot of merit. I think it's great. We have to find a mechanism to be able to do it safely within the ordinances that currently exist. So that's a longer discussion than we'll have for, that we can do tonight, because we can't take any action on it. But it, I think the agreement, the idea is, is that we will move this forward through the planning and zoning process to get a special variance. And we'll work and help get this moved through. It is going to take some time, and it may not happen right away, and we're not saying no, but it is going to take a little bit of time to get it done.
Would we cut the sign into the sections and then?
I think, I think that's, we can discuss that, but I mean, really, it should, that should, something that should come up through before planning and zoning. And those, and have that discussion there.
Just has to go through the process. And Sherri, you and I have talked about this, and I know Kim from working with, on the Cubs group. But I also know that as I have driven down Sheridan Road through other communities, either going to Chicago or taking scenic drives to and from Chicago, that I've seen these banners in other communities along the North Shore, and they've been really inspiring from the standpoint, especially what we're all going through now and facing the pandemic, how it's had us all boxed in for several months now. And to see the positive reinforcement, especially in light of everything happened with, that happened with George Floyd, the peaceful protest, it's been, it's been beautiful for me to see some of the communities that I did not think would have these signs up about what diversity means in their community and how we should be operating as the United States of America and not the divided states of America through simple signs and through simple artworks. So as everything in government, things take time. And it's a terrific idea, and we will, we will work on it.
So can you share what the process is for everybody here with an idea like this, that it's a sign? What, I mean, you talk about, well, the people don't know what the process is, could you?
Director Ionsen, do you want to?
Yeah, typically, it goes, they petition for a special use or variance of Planning and Zoning Commission. Once it goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission, they recommend to approve.
So if you could slow down, where do you find the application?
It's actually in the city's sideboards.
Okay, and is there a fee for applying?
It's a six hundred dollar fee.
Six hundred dollar fee, six hundred and five dollars? Okay, so, okay, so that much?
Well, once it goes to the Commission, they recommend either to approve, deny, or approve applications. All of it is presented to the city council, they hear the recommendation, and they will apply. The application of the Zoning Commission.
How often does that work?
It's the first Thursday and Friday.
And does anything that's been applied for prior to that, or is there a waiting period?
It's usually forty-five days to get processed. Once we get the application, it has to be publicized, there are some notices.
Wait, so publicized for, for to, in the paper?
For the paper, for the, what the request is.
And so it has to be publicized in the news sign?
Yes.
Sherri, did you have to do this for the Coalition of Healthy Community Signs, the words that are around? So you didn't, you didn't go through this process for the, for the banners?
But we would stop. No, I've never, I did not know that there was anything for me.
But that was public, but it wasn't.
Oh, I see, okay.
So if we put these on public property?
Well, I'd like to hold on to the special with the city council.
And who maintains the banners going forward? Has that been all handled?
So the idea was that they would just be up until October 30th? So they would just be put up for, as an art exhibit? And then if they go well, then be re-put up next summer? And the individual who was, who volunteered to put them on property offered to like, even change out, put up, you know, different statements or whatever?
I mean, the city does own property, so if we put those signs up on public property, we wouldn't have to go through this process. Is that what you're saying?
Would that be approved by the mayor and the council?
Sure, okay. So then the step would just be approval of, for the council, from the council to put up a sign on city property?
Would there still be a six hundred dollar fee?
No, because it would have to go through the process.
Okay.
Good question. And Sherri, just to address one of your comments about the city, one of the things that I'm finding out during the pandemic, as I've had many calls from residents, I am finding even residents that have lived here for many years sometimes don't know who to contact about different issues. So I know that we're all reachable with people that I have talked with through the last four months, probably three or four people every day. We've been making the concerted effort to be able to direct them to where they need to go and do a better job, as we've talked about over the years, about trying to get communication out so that they're clear about if there's a housing issue, they call Director Ionsen. If it's Public Works, of course, with the police and fire, those are pretty much self-explanatory. Even as we've gone through the pandemic with billing and accounts and finances, we've made sure that our people know who that they can contact as we've delayed late fees on water payments and things of that nature. So we've been trying to connect with our residents to make sure that they understand, even those that have been here for a long time sometimes don't always know who to contact. So I get contacted a lot, and so I've been able to disseminate that information.
And more than who to contact, what for? Yeah, I mean, they just don't, like, just the exact situation with the banner. And now, like, thinking about the other banners and making, you know what I mean? The, all of the different rules, and as township supervisor, I get overwhelmed with the rules that I'm supposed to know, and I can't keep up. And so all of the city ordinances and all the rules, and, I mean, for somebody to want to do something like this, and they would just read that they have to pay six hundred dollars to get it to even be heard, then people, you know, instead of coming before you guys and having, you know, somebody create it on the board, say, "Wait a minute, can we do it this way?" They just shut it down. And I'd really love to be able to open up that communication in the community.
Well, a lot of this information is on the website.
And that's what I'm saying, and it will shut people down because there's a six hundred and five dollar fee, even bring it before the board.
I even think before you get to the fees, a lot of times, what I've been finding is we are asked to provide information a lot of times that people can find for themselves. And so that makes a lot of, what we do sometimes arduous, but it's part of what we do. So in terms of the fees and structures, I think people have to understand too that that's how we provide services for our community. It's not that we, you know, everyone likes new roads. We want to get new roads, but they have to be paid for. So, yes.
So to pay that six hundred dollars, put in the application, you can do a banner, that money can go to the roads or whatever, you know, that's how that works.
Administrator Nabel?
Yeah, so, yeah, so the process, cybering kick in, I'm sitting over here cybering.
Been doing a good job.
So paying the fee is just for the process, to go through the process. Like you said, just to be heard by Planning and Zoning. Like Director Ionsen said, you have to then publish, there's notification requirements to go through that. They have, assuming they approve it, then it would go to the council. They approve it. If it doesn't, there's no guarantees associated with that application. So, but yes, there is a fee on that. Now, there are, you know, I'm going to cover the years of the finance director part of me too when I say this. There's nothing preventing us from waiving the fee for something like that, especially if it's a civil type, so, yeah, you can throw that out. But here's, here's, here's where I'm going to be the party pooper a little bit. You know I'm good at that.
I'm so used to that.
Public property piece, the other thing we have to think about, though, is, and it's up to the council on deciding whether to accept this or not, but there, there is public property liability with the signs get loose, go across something, you know? And we also have to make sure we're consistent and fair with who we allow to put up things in public property. So, you know, if somebody comes up and says, "Hey, I'm running this event. This is good for the community. Can I put banners everywhere?" Yes, no, who do we say yes to, who do we say no? Just because we agree with them or we don't agree with them, that can get a little dicey. So there's liability issues, and there's also potential selective issues that could be raised. Not just, again, that's council's decision, but it's things that, that's my job is to look at the big picture and at least present all the options. There are some other discussions we'll have to have probably about the, if it's two banners or something, try and figure that out. But we do not have the authority to just unilaterally bypass. We're bound by the planning and zoning process, so we can't just override that. That's commission rules, we have TIP Commission, Liquor Commission, Planning and Zoning. We can't just hop over that and say, you know, we'll supersede that. But we can look at the things that are within our control to try and make the process easier and less painful going through it.
And before you ask another question, I've been getting these darts from our. So I want to make sure that Mr. Vasselli?
Mr. Chair, I apologize. I was not throwing darts. It's a terrible aim, anyway, so we, we got you. Madam Supervisor, I am here at least three days a week. I have no charge to the city or to your organization. I'd be more than happy to sit down and take you through this process. And Ms. Kim, if you want to join us, we'd more than have to do if the council's okay with that. I want to move this along. I want to make sure we don't violate any First Amendment or liability concerns for the city. Obviously, your heart is in the right place, but we are an institution that has to abide by its own rules. So, and probably most importantly, I mean, we cannot take final action on this because we're all governed here by the Old Meetings Act. So if you want, please stick around after the meeting. Mr. Chair, if you're okay with this, and I will set up a time with that to meet. We can go through the process. You will not, I, I'm not saying we will not charge you for this process. We'll make sure that we'll shepherd this through, and we'll make sure that you know what you can do, what you can't do. And if you want to say one thing, I am not an operational person or a finance person, but the money that gets charged for this actually gets recirculated for those publication requirements that we have to follow through the state. So one in business would refer to this as a lost leader. We probably lose money on these fees that are charged on there. So it's a very, very low fee, actually. If you look in the region or other places where my son, my law partner, practice and do land use issues. To wrap that up, because I'm talking late, stick around afterwards. We'll set up a time, and I'll talk to you guys through the process.
Is it okay if we don't stick around and we just connect?
Don't stick around. You can connect with me. You got my email address. Send me an email, we'll set up a time.
So just a quick question to understand the two opportunities. One is to go through the process and put them on private property. But another opportunity could be for her to go to each of the taxing bodies.
They'll be fantastic if you can put that in the email and know what you need to get.
Okay, okay, so just to understand that's a good question.
So separation of church and state, if you put them on the church property, it would be double.
We'll talk to you later. Thank you very much.
All right, item number eight, moving on, consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on July 7, 2020 at 7:00 P.M. And approval, but not release, of both session minutes of a meeting held on July 7, 2020 at 8:28 P.M.
I'll move to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Farsen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor Kenny?
Aye.
Bills, vouchers 135354 through 135417 drawn on Huntington National Bank. Total, $285,832.45.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the bills.
Is there a second? Is there a discussion, comment? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Farsen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor Kenny?
Aye. Item number nine, consider passing resolutions as follows. Item 8A, improvement under Illinois Highway Code. Rebuild Illinois Bond MFT Fund for the 2020 Road Alley Program per Director Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Attached will find a resolution that is required by IDOP for utilization of the rebuilt Illinois Bond MFT Fund. The rebuild Illinois Bond Fund is an additional allotment to the city's motor fuel tax fund. Expenditure of these funds is required to be tracked separately. The funds are to be used for the 2020 Road Alley Program if needed. Staff requests and recommends approval of the IDOP resolution for the expenditure of $260,000 from the rebuilt Illinois Bond MFT Fund.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there questions or comments from the commissioners? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Farsen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor Kenny?
Aye. Item number nine B regarding the three-fifths compromise of the United States Constitution, Article One, Section Two, Clause Three, per Commissioner McDowell. Thank you, Mayor. The Zion Benton Ministerial Association meets once a month. Various ministers representing churches in our community. And on the agenda is an item every month to consider ways to bring healing and unity to Zion. So we discuss and pray about those issues on a regular basis. And at one of our meetings, one of our members brought to the attention of the Ministers' Association, an issue with the three-fifths compromise. Some of the ministers vaguely recalled the three-fifths compromise in the Constitution. Some of us hadn't studied that since eighth grade and taking the Constitution test. But we quickly became very familiar with this and appointed a committee to study it. Reverend Matt Kearney was one of those people. Reverend Levann Pipes was another. Pastor Leo Barnes was another. And Pastor Chance Brinkman was another member that studied this issue and brought back to the Ministers' Association the idea of creating a resolution. We weren't quite sure where to go with this, so we asked State's Attorney Mike Nierheim to join one of our meetings and ask him what should be the next steps in approaching our congressional representatives. And he suggested that we bring a resolution, or a suggested resolution, to the city council. And Mayor and Commissioners, that's why you have this resolution before you. As we were considering, the Zion Benton Ministerial Association was considering this, we realized that it is a huge issue, and we just thought we'd get the ball rolling on it. And that's why you have this resolution before you. And I'd like to read it for the council's consideration. Whereas the city of Zion in Illinois is a non-home rule municipality organized and operated under the Illinois Municipal Code, and whereas the mayor and commissioners of the city council, collectively the corporate authorities, acknowledge that the three-fifths compromise of 1787 enshrined in Article One, Section Two, Clause Three of the United States Constitution was intended to limit the power of the slaveholding southern states not to express the value of black lives as three-fifths of a human being. Nevertheless, the lasting effect of this compromise and the specific language of our Constitution, three-fifths of all other persons, has been symbol, has been to symbolize to black Americans that for much of our nation's history, they were considered and treated as less than fully human. And whereas the corporate authorities acknowledge that the Thirteenth Amendment rendered the three-fifths compromise legally obsolete by removing the category of enslaved individuals, and the Fourteenth Amendment, Section Two, replaced And the Fourteenth Amendment, Section Two, replaced the language of the three-fifths compromise, counting the whole person of each state. And the corporate authorities call upon our national legislature to take appropriate measures to more forcefully and fully address this wound that has been such a lasting and that has had such a lasting and debilitating effects on the population of our nation. And I think Reverend Kearney explained a little bit of the details of that. It's not that we're arguing the historicity of this and wanting to remove the history of our nation. It's just not clear that the three-fifths compromise that's front and center in our Constitution is null and void. You really have to search to find that. So we want to make it plain that that's the case. I'll continue in the resolution. Whereas in the corporate authorities' humble opinion, the language of the Thirteenth and Fourteenth Amendment does not go far enough in owning the injustice of the three-fifths compromise and its lasting effect, including but not limited to the Missouri Compromise of 1820, the Indian Removal Act of 1830, the Kansas Nebraska Act of 1859. All those acts were very clear what their purposes were. Our country's governing documents more forcefully denounce prohibition through the Twenty-First Amendment and its repeal of the Eighteenth than they do the three-fifths compromise. Additionally, a reader not already familiar with the entirety of the Constitution finds the language of the three-fifths compromise in the opening paragraphs, but does not read that the governing power of the compromise has been nullified until much later in the document. The practical effect of this current format on the official website of the Constitution, for example, is to keep the three-fifths compromise front and center and its replacement via the Thirteenth and Fourteenth Amendment buried deep in the documents. And whereas now is the time for our nation's political parties to join together as one in acknowledging this open wound and taking steps to bring healing to our beautiful, diverse land. And whereas the corporate authorities believe that a unified, comprehensive, and readily visible denunciation of the three-fifths compromise is an important step for our country, and call upon our congressional leaders to take appropriate action. So I'd like to move that we adopt this resolution.
Are there questions or is there a second? I would say.
I have some comments. Is this the time to make comments before?
It is.
So when I read this, I definitely think it's a step in the right direction. Not only given based on what's going on in our country at this present time and even looking back. But I question, is it the right jurisdiction for us to even discuss this? But I do want to add, if we are going to discuss it and/or adopt it, I'd like to see it a little bit more rigor in the writing of it, more so in the sense of defining racism as a public crisis. And that's my comment.
Mr. Chair, I probably forgot because I just had my agenda. I didn't hear maybe the clerk, but how many, who gave the second?
Nobody did.
I believe there was a second.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I know it's procedural, but if we don't mind, we could give a second, even if it's just for discussion purposes. Under Roberts' Rules of Order, a lot of additions, you don't need to endorse, we're not endorsing the seconded. It just needs to go forward for procedural purposes.
Okay. And so I understand if there is not a second, the motion dies?
Correct. But we've already had commentary.
Okay. So is there a second?
We, let's give the second.
Second. Okay. So further discussion?
Yes, I have a statement. Regarding the proposed resolution regarding the three-fifths compromise of the United States Constitution, Article One, Section Two, Clause Three, as introduced for consideration by the city council for the city of the City of Zion. On first reading of the proposed resolution, the stated purpose of highlighting the historic injustice of the three-fifths compromise appears to be a laudable, albeit symbolic gesture. However, in the main, the justification for action and the recommended remedy presented in the resolution are problematic at best. Setting aside the contention that the Thirteenth and Fourteenth Amendments, which have been in place for over a century, are insufficient in denouncing the offending section of Article One, I want to focus on other justifications given as they more directly concern the proposed remedy in the resolution. To wit, on page two of the resolution, second paragraph, quote, additionally, a reader not already familiar with the entirety of the Constitution finds the language of the three-fifths compromise in the opening paragraphs, but does not read that the governing power of the compromise has been nullified until much later in the document. Objectively, this is true. However, in a printed copy of the Constitution, which I have referenced, the offending section is clearly highlighted within a set of brackets and footnoted. Said footnote states, quote, "One, changed by Section Two of the Fourteenth Amendment." All of us familiar with the use of footnotes will recognize that the reader is being directed to the relevant amendment for further reading. In the official text of the Constitution, available on the website of the National Archive, which is also referenced in the next paragraph of the resolution, the offending language is hyperlinked directly to the Fourteenth Amendment, allowing the reader to look ahead. The next paragraph of the resolution states, quote, "The practical effect of this current format on the official website of the Constitution, for example, is to keep the three-fifths compromise front and center and its replacement via the Thirteenth and Fourteenth Amendments buried deep in the document." Again, objectively, that is true if we make the presumption that a reader unfamiliar with footnotes or hyperlinks becomes incapable of reading past the first page of the document and in the case of the handy pocket version I have referred to here, is unable to traverse the chasm of 21 additional pages to arrive at the Fourteenth Amendment. This brings me to my concerns regarding this resolution and its stated purpose first. As already noted, there is the contention that the existence of the Thirteenth and Fourteenth Amendments are not front and center to the reader at the point where they are reading the offending language in Article One. And apparently, existing footnotes or other means of reference do not satisfy the call for a strong denunciation of the three-fifths compromise. As noted, the resolution states, "The practical effect of this current format..." And further down in the text of Section Two, which is at the end of this resolution, I'll note, the resolution states, the practical, excuse me, and further down in the text of Section Two of the resolution, quote, "The corporate authorities call upon the congressional leaders of the United States of America to make a unified, comprehensive, and readily visible denunciation of the three-fifths compromise." I want to draw your attention to the words "current format" and "readily visible." Here is what I believe is the fundamental problem with this resolution in its substance. If this was any other document or statute, it would be an ordinary process to strike or add language to it for clarification or to reflect changes in society. However, this is the Constitution of the United States of America. And the only method to satisfy the requirements of this resolution requires a rewriting of Article One. And short of holding a second constitutional convention to do so, this will not happen. In my opinion, the resolution is fundamentally flawed and should not be approved by this council. I will provide a copy of this statement to the city clerk, both printed and by electronic means, for inclusion in the official minutes of this meeting.
Is there further discussion or conflict?
The people that crafted this resolution and the Zion Benet Ministerial Association recognizes that to make the kind of change that you just suggested would take a constitutional convention, which although possible, highly unlikely, and it's not the request. It would be possible also to add an additional amendment to the Constitution, which clearly delineates and nullifies in plain language the three-fifths compromise. The bar for that is also very high. And that's not the request of this. We're asking, we're going to be asking, we would like to ask, and the Zion Benet Ministerial Association will likely still ask our congressional representative to address this issue before Congress, to make notations in the public display of these documents that is clear. Clearer than it's already, you mentioned that you've got links to the Fourteenth Amendment. But the Fourteenth Amendment just says that the whole person will be counted. We think it should be a little bit clearer than that. And we want our congressional leaders to discuss this and see what they can do to make the three-fifths compromise and the, clear that it's been nullified. That's what we want to do.
Well, as I know that, you know, it is a, it's a laudable sentiment.
Yeah.
But this vehicle, this resolution, is not, is flawed. It's very foundation.
Well...
And that, I don't think it is for our, this body, to simply put a resolution like this forward.
Yeah.
Without considering that in order to satisfy the demands of this resolution would require calling for a second constitutional convention.
Not if we're asking for a...
Because I'm reading the demands as stated in this resolution. And now you're saying that, no, this is just to enhance...
There's nothing in this document that calls for a constitutional convention.
No, there isn't, but my reading of it and my understanding of how constitutional law works, that's the only way you're going to get a change to Article One.
Yeah. Well, we did bring in some legal advice, and we asked State's Attorney Mike Nierheim to take a look at the statement. His view of it is quite different than yours. He said, "This is, this is an excellent document, well-worded, well-crafted."
Mm-hmm.
And then he was the one who said, "Well, your next step should be to approach the Zion City Council, went to Parbor City Council, Beach Park City Council, Waukegan City Council, and ask for an adoption of a resolution." And so some of our members are going to contact Sam Cunningham to do the same thing in Waukegan. And I expect, I'm hoping that it's passed in all these cities, and I also hope that it passes in Zion.
I just have a question. Isn't this something from my understanding that is done more on a congressional level, legislation level? So I'm, as I've read it, I certainly understand the sentiment, being a black American in this country for 65 years. Oh, I just tell my age. I'm sorry.
You gave it up.
I'm sorry. But that, from what I understand about how this needs to move forward as congressional action and either the President of the United States or political parties or by custom. So I'm...
This is just the beginning stage.
This is just a question of why wouldn't it start there instead of what, I think we all fundamentally agree, the minorities, black Americans in the room, that this seems to be covered in some respects.
Ten to two.
Huh?
Ten to two.
Yes. Excuse me. So my curiosity is just why wouldn't it start at the congressional level with the people that we know, Congressman Snyder, who's been an advocate for the City of Zion, and our Senators, Senator Bush, and our state reps?
Yeah. We're just asking, acting upon the advice of our State's Attorney. And he said an appropriate step would be having municipalities endorse this. This will give more weight to the document and as we present it to our congressional leaders. So that's the purpose of it.
With all due respect to the State's Attorney, he does not vote on this council.
I'm just telling you what he said.
I understand. And, but that kind, you know, to try, you know, basically to use his stature to push this kind of legislation, I don't feel is appropriate.
Well, you can certainly call him and verify what he said to us.
But he does not sit on this council. And my contention is, is that for whatever the sentiments or however laudable this is, this is not the correct way to do this. If the Zion Ministerial Association wants to lobby Congressman Schneider or Congress directly and ask him to bring this kind of action to Congress, I'm perfectly happy with that. But as a governing body, I don't feel that we should be pushing this kind of agenda politics, agenda legislation, through this body. I mean, I could come here with, every month, with a resolution supporting one cause or another and asking for action. But it's not relevant to the city's business. And I really feel that it has no place here. I feel the document is flawed in its argument and that if you want to pursue a second constitutional convention, talk to your congressman, talk to your state legislature. But it does not belong here.
Okay. Thanks for your opinion.
Thank you, sir.
So I guess just if I'll add to that, I understand some of what Commissioner Fisher was trying to express. I guess when I read it, I didn't read it in quite the same way. This is a resolution, no different than when we honored the folks that do the peanuts and some of the other resolutions and things that we've made for the city. However, I do agree that it lacks substance. It lacks some of the exacting research or suggestions and wording, and it's not prescriptive at all. So in terms of like any material fact that would come out of passing the resolution, I just really don't, I don't see that or feel any of that in the wording. I mean, I get the overall sentiment, but I think with the research that's been done, there could have been, to Commissioner Holmes' point, stronger wording or something that's a bit more subjective, knowing that this is, or suggestive rather, knowing that this is a first step. If I was to take this as a first step, I wouldn't be clear on what the next step would be. And if, you know, we're saying that this is something that we feel strongly about, then I think we should take that.
Well, some of our members feel very strongly about it.
I understand that. And to that, I think that we should take the extra step then, or the committee should take the extra step to say, here's wording that is acceptable, right? So we're calling out what's not acceptable with what's there today, but we have no prescription on what actually would be acceptable and what would repair that injury, if you will. So for that reason, I don't know if we're at the point of taking votes, but I would vote no on the resolution as presented.
Okay. Sorry to hear that.
Mr. Chair, I have two questions, if that makes sense, from a parliamentary standpoint. Number one is with the, there are two obvious avenues to go, the will of the majority of the council is clear. Would that be a motion to table it, bring it back for revisions, or a motion to deny it? And I just want to make sure whatever motion gets put on the table is a clear motion. Obviously, everyone has a lot of the laudable sentiments of it, but as we said before when we're talking about the land use issue, we are a body of rules and governance, and I think that's what we're coming back to today. So I just want to make sure, Mr. Chair, that whatever motion is made after that is a clear motion as to how the council's going to proceed and with direction for myself and staff, how we're supposed to proceed. That's my only question. That's my only concern.
And to be, to reiterate those points again about the options, you said tableling was one or...
Well, point of order.
There's more. I mean, there's more.
Point of order. A motion has been made and seconded. And that's the motion that we're voting on, correct?
That's not necessarily correct, Commissioner. You could also make a superseding motion at this point in time, because that is a main motion, which is the most inferior of all motions under Roberts' Eleven. And based upon that, you could table it at this point. You could motion, you could just, you could vote out and just fail, or it could win. You could motion, you could just, you could vote out and just fail, or you could win. And there's other, you could refer it to a committee, there's other different options at this point in time. So, your point is well-taken, but just from a parliamentary standpoint, the vote, I mean, main motion is not your only option here, and my point interjecting was, you could table it, you could refer it to a committee, or you could let it vote out, and you just fail. I just wanna make sure that the board, sorry, the council, is aware of its different options at this point in time. I hope that house clarified.
Yes. So, is there a counter motion?
My motion is to not accept the, uh, uh, resolution.
That would be a motion to deny.
To deny.
As presented.
As presented. Not tabled, deny.
Well, can't we just vote on it? I, I mean, I would prefer voting on it. I think.
And that, I mean, you can vote no, and that would be a denial.
Absolutely. Attorney, Ms. Lee said.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, absolutely. The Commissioner's correct that you would, if your intention is to not to vote to deny, you would just vote it out, and it would just be roll call, and the proverbial votes would fall as they are.
All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Nay.
Commissioner Holmes.
Nay.
Mayor McKinney.
Abstain. Item number ten, consider passing ordinance as follows. Authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement relative to the property located south of Russell Road and west of Kenosha Road per Administrator Naval.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Earlier we had a public hearing regarding the annexation agreement and what the intent is. We have two items on the agenda as it relates to that tonight. The first is authorizing the execution of the annexation agreement, which if approved, the next step would then to be, be to actually annex the property. So, the first item on here is the, the annexation agreement relative to the properties that were discussed, south of Russell Road and west of Kenosha, Kenosha Road, and I would recommend approval of the ordinance as presented.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes.
Aye.
Mayor McKinney.
Aye. Item number ten B, annexing certain territory to the city of Zion, Lake County, Illinois, located south of Russell Road and west of Kenosha Road per Administrator Naval.
Thank you again, Mayor Commissioners. This is just the second part of it, to actually annex the territory, the ten parcels that are detailed in the legal description within the ordinance, and I would recommend approval of that as presented.
I'll move. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes.
Aye.
Mayor McKinney.
Aye. Item number ten C, amending chapter thirty-four of the Zion Municipal Code regarding explosives and fireworks per Administrator Naval.
Thank you again, you're gonna be hearing a lot of it here, one right after another, but, um, so, in the recent month or so, we've had a lot of issues with fireworks within the city going off at all different times, which has created quite a disturbance for a lot of people. In reviewing our, the city code as relates to fireworks, um, there was some cleaning up to do to get it in line with state codes, and make sure we just clarify some ambiguities on what's legal, what's not, what's allowed, what's not. I mean, the default, I would say, when you'd be safe saying, "It's not legal." There are some things that are allowed, including like sparklers, hot cats, snakes, things of that nature, but this cleans up a lot of that, to try and encourage individuals to only partake in professional public displays for their own safety and also the safety of everyone around them, potential fire risks to surrounding property, physical damage to themselves, and just the general respect of, of your neighbors. So, this ordinance cleans up a lot of the language in our code as it relates to fireworks, and I would recommend approval of the event, the change as presented.
I, I would just like to offer one comment, not only is not, are they not legal in Zion, they're not legal in the state of Illinois.
Correct.
So it's, it's not, this is not a Zion penalty, this is abiding by the state of Illinois guidelines. So is, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Is there discussion? I'd just like to thank you, Mayor, for taking the initiative to clean up this fireworks ordinance. I think it's well, well needed.
Thank you. I'll address this more as probably chief, the prospective chiefs will address this in departmental commentary, because it's a, a huge concern for our citizens during this shutdown, with the amount of calls that I've seen, and, you know, Administrator Naval, you talked about the fire risk, but there's a cumulative effect also with these fireworks that disturb neighborhoods, people, people with PTSD, health conditions, and so those are things that we are trying to address with this change in the fireworks ordinance.
I have one, my, Mr. Chair. Under the section H for denial of permit, it's been stricken to show just cause for denial, just to remove any level of like subjectivity from whoever's in that chief position. I was wondering why we wouldn't provide that cause, given all of the other requirements that would be needed to apply for a permit.
If, if I read that correctly, the, the, the striking of that, Commissioner, is that in order to get a permit for this, you have to be a professional operator, if not for permits for citizens to get these, and what we've seen in the community over the last, I'd say since Memorial Day, is professional-grade fireworks being set off in our community, and it is really disruptive. If you wanna have a nice quiet dinner, or watch TV, or a quiet evening at home, it's like, it's been like being in a war zone, and I can tell when you're, when we've been cooped up as long as we have, it does have a negative effect on the neighborhood and everyone that lives in it, or in the periphery of those neighborhoods. So, I think, as I read that as well, I thought the clarification would be there, for a permit, it has to be people that are professionally licensed to run fireworks. Am I incorrect on that, or correct?
Mr. Chair, I may.
You may.
You are. That's, yes, that's my answer.
Okay. All right, does that satisfy your question, Commissioner?
Um, not quite. So, since the denial of permit, the fire rescue chief of the police, or the police chief or both, shall have the power to deny any application for a permit. So at that point, I'm assuming these are professional requests to display public fireworks.
Yes.
And we're saying, they can display, or they can deny for any reason, not showing any just cause, right? So, I would assume through the application process, if they didn't meet the criteria, we would communicate that, instead of arbitrarily saying no.
So typically, what happens? So, when the Fourth of July occurs, everybody creates, a high school does its occasion for graduations. The pyrotechnics company, first they have to be registered with the state of Illinois as a pyrotechnics company. So they'll supply all the information to the fire department for a permit. So, we have to have their pyrotechnics license for the operator, we have to have their distributor license in order to transport the pyrotechnics up to the location. We go onto the state website, we make sure it's current, that the company's current in all their fees and permits, that the operators are current in their licenses, and then typically, if everything matches up, we give them a permit. That's typically the process we follow. So for us to deny, and it's usually, it's always, I should say, a professional company. So the reason we were denied is if the operator wasn't on site, the pyrotechnics weren't under security the whole time they're here, they don't give us a, it's called a, well, easy language, it's a plan of where the fireworks are gonna go, how high they go, and how, how large each of the pyrotechnics are. So all this has to be submitted with the plan, so if that doesn't match, they get denied a permit. If it all works out, they get a permit.
And yeah, so given that, for a clean, objective process, I would assume we would provide that justification for denial. I mean, it, it seems reasonable at that point, so that, again, we're not having any liability or risk for denying people for other reasons.
It, just, my, my thought on this was, risk of liability, but coming from a different direction. So, this gives us more latitude for the unknowns or the unforeseen, so, you know, I, I'm, I'm trying to think of a situation where, you know, all of the i's and the t's are crossed, but we know that this individual is not reputable, but he has all the proper paperwork. If we say we're denying and have to give a reason, and it's, "We don't trust you," we actually expose ourselves probably to more liability by putting that in writing versus having flexibility to say, ultimately, for any reason allows us latitude for the unseen's that aren't specifically spelled out in the ordinance, because we're always, we're always trying to write the, the code and the legislation for the things we know about, but we also have to think about the things that we don't know about, that somebody could point out and go, "Well, you didn't say that in here, it's not specifically spelled out."
Right.
But it's still in the best interest of the city to not proceed, so, that's probably more, I, I understand your standpoint, but it's probably more in a bunch of caution to say, it gives us wiggle room, or it gives us other houses that aren't specifically spelled out, to avoid putting something in writing that isn't specifically spelled out in the code.
Got it.
And that's the, that's my thought behind that.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, council?
Sure, I'm sorry, I've said so much, it's an hour and a half, I apologize, and I'll try to stop.
Earn that money.
Right. Um, the, the, exactly right, exactly like the statement, it gives us more breadth to act, and I'm sure the chiefs, knowing that very well, that if called upon to ask and respond to someone, they will be basing it out, and, and of course, we don't just rely on personalities or people who's moving out, but I'm sure every other chief will have that threat of going forth, but it does give us additional breadth to be able to act, which is always a good thing when you're the regulatory agents.
And a notice from the prior ordinances, the fines have changed significantly, or they were thirty dollars for the first offense.
It was thirty, one hundred and two fifty, I think, and now it's two hundred and fifty, five hundred, seven fifty per, per second, thirty times.
Two hundred and fifty dollars for the first offense, five hundred for the second, and seven hundred and fifty.
That's what's proposed anyway.
Well, I, I, I've heard someone say, close to me, that if you wanna talk about disposable income, he, he put it into fireworks, burn your money up. Uh, thank you. So clerk, please call the roll. Great question, Commissioner.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes.
Aye.
Mayor McKinney.
Aye. Item number ten B, approving and authorizing a certain redevelopment agreement between the city of Zion and Abbey Groups, Inc., per Administrator Naval.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. After everything tonight, I've got the pleasure of a couple of positive things here. What you have before you is an ordinance for a redevelopment agreement between the city of Zion and Abbey Groups, Inc. This is, as it relates to the South Sherwood Road TIF number three, which runs, um, basically to the, to the end of Sherwood Road on the south side. This property is for the old Dune Sphere property. The city went through, you know, quite a while ago, probably six or seven years ago, acquiring that property for site control with TIF funds, demolishing the building, which was run down, dilapidated, not maintained, for the, the purpose of economic development. Uh, over the years, the, our economic development coordinator and members of the city council have continued marketing that site, and we are happy to say that we have been approached by Abbey Group, Inc., which is, and they're interested in putting a Popeyes chicken on that corner. So, however, part of that is the but four clause of TIF, they approached us to say, there are market challenges within the city of Zion, whether it's property taxes, construction costs, permit, you know, infrastructure costs, running, running lines, that they would not be able to do that without TIF assistance, to, to make up that gap, to make it viable, to basically put them further up in the queue, and get the, the return they need to justify a corporate. So, what they've come and asked us for is, is laid out before you in the TIF incentive. Um, the request is five hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, which is not to exceed fifty percent of the total project cost. It is reimbursement-based, so they will be incurring the costs, and upon all property expenses, file work, uh, files, uh, filed paperwork, et cetera, it will be reimbursed for that, after verifying eligible costs, um, and they hope to be, depending on us, I don't wanna speak for them, representatives are here outside, if you have questions, but um, they were initially talking about, you know, by the end of the year, how it goes according to plan. So I would enthusiastically recommend approval of the redevelopment agreement as presented.
Is there a motion?
I will move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any comments or questions, or would like the group to make a presentation if they would?
Yeah, if it's okay with, with you, Mayor, they would like to address the council.
Absolutely, please. The president's coming to Zion.
Thank you for considering Zion.
And, as the commercial jingle says, "Love that chicken."
Yes.
Popcorn shrimp, too.
Well, thank you for inviting us, you know, my name is Muhammad Abi, I'm the franchisee. We, I, we have fifteen stores already open, we in the process of building another twelve stores, and when we were approached by the city, we've been working since January with the city representative to, to, to make this possible, you know, we believe it's gonna be a, a great addition, it's gonna create jobs, permanent jobs, and we will love to, to, to come here and be part of the community, run a clean operation, have a clean place where not only we serve great food, but also we develop the future leaders, that, that can become a franchisees, and, 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 you know, be a role model for, for young people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And welcome to Zion.
Thank you, sir.
We're, we're happy you're here, and I, and I know that there's been a lot of work done behind the scenes, our city administrator, Dave Naval, and our economic development and community director, Sonny Le Bronson.
Yeah.
Working with this, this is just another example of, even though the pandemic hit all of the communities hard throughout the country, we continue to work on economic development here, and we want to thank you for coming here, and know that it's gonna be a good home for your, your franchise.
Most welcome. Most welcome.
Thank you, Your Honor and Commissioners. My name is Ryan Swanson, I'm a engineer and project manager with Arc Design Resources. We work with AB on several sites, and we're excited to get this one underway in terms of design. I just wanna mention, you know, in your packets, you have some information on, it's a, basically a brand-new prototype with some new branding elements, so we're excited to get this rolling in this community, and appreciate everybody's, you know, time this evening. So, with that, we can answer any questions if, if appropriate.
My question, Will Bear, you're gonna be selling the pop, uh, the popcorn shrimp. You are. I, I know they had those in some of the southern states when I spent some time in Houston, that they had them, and that was one of my favorite kind of go-to meals, when I didn't feel like cooking anything, so. Do you have a target date for the grand opening?
Yeah, we're looking forward to starting work with staff on some of the details at this point, so it's, it's great to get, get started, really.
And you mentioned that there's gonna be a little different concept from some of the other Popeyes, could you, could you talk to us about that?
Sure, it's, it's really on the exterior, you've got some upgraded building elements, some different colors, things like that, and then interior, that's probably maybe the biggest noticeable change, and really upscale materials, in terms of seating, tables, fixturing, things like that. So, this'll be, I think, our first one, hopefully, that we've rolled out this new branding with it, it'll have those elements to it, so we're pretty excited about that.
So, I, um, just wanted to make a comment. I currently travel between Waukegan and Kenosha to get my Popeyes, so thank you for saving me gas.
Yeah, I mean, it's so great to see that there are things happening on the southern part of our, our business strip right now, I mean, the Culvers is down there, the, the storage unit, and now with the Popeyes, and I know that we've approved some sites down there for dispensary. there for dispensaries, which will, once the licenses are approved, if they're approved by the state, I guess there's a thing, I don't know about it, called the munchies, I think people will be stopping it. Quite a bit, but again, thank you, and we're here, and I think our zoning commission, our planning and zoning commission, too, for the work that they've done and making sure that this happens, so.
Absolutely.
Welcome to town.
Thank you.
We better vote now. Let's do that. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Ferguson?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Aye.
Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor King?
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner McDowell. They thank you, thank you all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number ten E, authorizing and approving a certain donation agreement between the City of Zion and GS Zion Real Estate LLC, per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Um, we were approached by the owner of the property detailed out, GS Zion Real Estate LLC, about donating certain property to the City of Zion, about twenty acres of property. It's the old American industrial e-transfer building and related property just across from the Walmart on Route seventy-three. We bounced that around, looked at all the potential pros and cons, but it absolutely fits with, um, the plan for that, that corridor. Now that we've got enterprise zone, now that we are recording a Tiff in that area, this just gives us another tool for development of that corridor. So, what you have before you is actually a donation agreement, we would be paying, we would be reimbursing the individual for taxes paid to date for two thousand and nineteen, which will provide, we also have a due diligence period of forty-five days, that can be extended up to sixty, based on our environmental analysis, and we still want to do some, our due, some due diligence internally, walk through the property, look at the environmental, and just make sure we're assessing all potential risks, but ultimately, this will be a great asset for development for the city, and I would recommend approval of the donation agreement as presented.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A second?
Second.
Are there questions or comments from the council members?
I think, I'll just make the comment that this is a property that has been vacant for at least a decade, possibly that long?
Uh, of course.
Yeah, pretty close to a decade. I, I've seen it gone up from one broker to another, to self-sale, and it's been empty. If this is an opportunity that we can use this property and bring some more development to the city, I think it's to our great benefit, so I'm enthusiastic about this.
As am I, and I think one of the things that I was asked by some, a couple of commissioners, we've had interest in that building from entities that are, have expressed interests prior to us owning the business about bringing businesses in, so this, again, gives us another additional tool in our toolbox that we haven't had before, so thank our corporate council and everyone that's worked on this to, to see that this happens, that we are gaining assets to our community, and showing that in spite of everything going on with the pandemic, tax that are talked about regularly in Illinois, that we are making an environment here that is conducive for businesses to come here, in spite of our, our challenges. So, did everyone vote? I want to make sure everyone voted.
We have.
All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Ferguson?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Aye.
Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor King?
Aye. Item number eleven, discussion, authorization, approval, item eleven A, consider approval of memorandum of understanding between the City of Zion, the City of Waukegan, and Lake County Perv Chief Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners, you have before you a memo that details funding award to the City of Zion, requires a memorandum of understanding, it's from the Department of Justice, the two thousand, two thousand and twenty Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, commonly known as a JAG grant. The City of Waukegan functions as a fiscal agent on behalf of the county, on behalf of the City of Zion and administration of this grant, it's easier for the Department of Justice, rather than having three independent entities, to apply for that grant, which the award amount is not so large to justify that, it's easier to have the City of Waukegan, either fiscal entity, pay, receive the funds, and then disperse them to us. We've been awarded them out just under seventy-five hundred, and I don't know if CAF is still here, we are considering using that, wanting to buy a speed radar trailer and portable speed radar, so I'm just trying to address our speeding issues, our traffic safety issues.
All right, is there a motion? Thank you, Chief Henderson, make that motion.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Ferguson?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Aye.
Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor King?
Aye. Item memorandum eleven B, consider approval of revised City of Zion Siren Activation Policy, per Chief Lewis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Earlier this year, Lake County Emergency Management Association approached me and asked me to revise our emergency operations plan, which was last written in two thousand and seventeen. While doing that, part of the plan is our siren activation policy, which was actually last, well, it was actually developed in July of two thousand and eleven. So, over the last nine years, we've had some changes in the city based on our dispatch center and hierarchy within the personnel. So, you have in front of you a revised plan, mostly housekeeping, you'll see some strikeouts in there and some bold language, just to bring it up to speed, um, make it a little bit clearer. If you don't have any other questions, I just ask for approval of the plan, or the policy.
Make that motion.
Second.
Is there a discussion, questions?
I do have a question for the chief. Actually, it's just a couple of things. Section five, five B, it says the city administrator and mayor, and then it strikes the mayor pro temp, I'm not protesting about that, but it says shall be notified by cellphone anytime there is an activation of the sirens. Do we really want to say it has to be by cellphone? Or should be notified by, whatever available means?
We can, I mean, it was always cellphone, just because that was the easiest, if the sirens go off, you make a quick phone call, this is why the sirens are going. I mean, nine times out of ten, you probably know why the sirens are going off. But, we, we could certainly change that to whatever means.
Yeah, should be, shall be notified, you know.
Shall be notified, yeah, we do it that way.
The means will follow, yeah. That's the only comment I have, other than being struck, struck off the notification list.
Well, that's because you just had a mayor at the time and a mayor pro temp, I had to throw city administrator there somehow.
Okay, so you're trying to keep the, the number of people you have to notify down to a minimum?
Yeah, it's not me notifying them, so.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll call, I'll call everyone. The sirens, items C and item two, two siren tones.
Yeah.
Could you, I was, I was hoping, I know it'd be very difficult tonight for us to get a kind of a, maybe a demonstration of what those tones sound like.
Well, I can tell you that if you go into the IEMA website, you can actually click a little play button, I mean, the tones, there's two tones, one is the normal tone that you hear the first two days in a month, which is a long siren that just goes.
Yep.
The second tone is the air raid siren that you see from the movies.
Ah, okay.
That's the up and down tone constantly.
Yep.
That's the one that goes off in the event we have some major United States threat.
Okay.
Hopefully, we never hear that one go off.
Absolutely, I was thinking that, and just from, based on what we've talked about from the outset about communication with our residents, I, I think it's important, I'm sure that you've done this already, as this gets put out on your, your webpage, that they understand the differences between the tones, and, and hopefully, we never hear that second tone.
Yeah, I mean, we've never had it in the policy before, I took that off IEMA webpage, just added to their webpage, so I thought that would be good to know.
Okay.
In case someone goes to the IEMA webpage and says, "What's this about two tones? Does yours do two tones?" Now, the one thing you have to keep in mind, and I don't want to start a long, lengthy discussion, but our sirens are very, very old, and they're basically, they're run by, there's a radio like this one, sitting inside the siren box, and when dispatch hits a button, it's just like toning out a radio, it sets the sirens on.
Now.
Modern sirens go off based on frequency waves now, that are set off by National Weather Service systems, you can use them through public speaking, I mean, you can talk over them, whatever you want, but those are hundred thousands of dollars to replace the system.
I was going to ask the, ask the cost, and with those costs, is there any way for us to get grant funding for those?
Uh, right now, no.
Okay.
And ours worked very well, as that actually goes out the first Tuesday in a month, one member goes to each siren, and then I get an email about ten fifteen saying all the sirens worked, or one siren didn't work. If the siren doesn't work, then we have our company, Fulton Technologies, that goes out and repairs the sirens.
Okay. Clerk, please call the roll unless there's more questions.
Um, I was just going to call out section five D, just kind of for public consumption, it says there will never be an all-clear signal from the outdoor warning sirens, people in or near the warned area should monitor reliable source such as NOAA All Hazards Radio or local media service to know when a threat has dissipated, so Chief, I don't know if you wanted to add anything else?
I can't, the reason there's never an all-clear is because there is no second sound, so if you heard that siren going off for an all-clear, you don't know if it's an all-clear, or it's actually another tornado or emergency coming through. So, what they recommend, and you've probably heard this on commercials sometime in March, when the state has their weather emergency messages and stuff, everybody should have like a weather radio at home, you know, or some type of radio where they're listening to these broadcasts, so after the emergency, you would hear it's an all-clear. I mean, what we may do, and I can't guarantee this, it's all brand new, but this may be an instance where we do one of those Blackboard Connect messages, and say that the threat has now dissipated, it is safe to come out.
Yeah.
You know, that's something we may very well use it for as well.
Yeah, a reliable source.
If everybody registers for Blackboard, like they should. To date, we still only have about three hundred and fifty cellphones registered, so out of twenty-four thousand people in town, that's not a good percentage, so.
All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Ferguson?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Aye.
Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor King?
Aye. Item number eleven C, consider approval of additional, of additional seventy-five hours for legal represent, representation for the nuclear waste storage compensation project, per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. This item relates to the Stranded Act, where we are pursuing federal legislation to get compensated, not only for us, but all other communities like us that are essentially serving as, in nuclear storage sites for spent fuel. We have two point two million pounds of it sitting on our lakefront, if you weren't aware of that, I'm sure everyone is, without any consideration for ultimately where it's going to go, or what the plans are, it's just, we're stuck with it. So, we've been working on this for a little over four years, and as you can guess, things in Congress can be slow and tedious, sometimes intentionally, just to make sure things are done the right way, but to date, the city has spent, this, the, we, we approve blocks of time, the cost of which is shared by all the taxing bodies, based on that proportionate share of the tax bills, so our share of total time to date over those four years is only about twelve thousand dollars for the city. As of this point in time, the bill is in committee in both the House and the Senate, we are trying to get it called into committee and get it to the floor, that's our big push right now, and we're working hard on that, we have a strategy for how to do that, sometimes it's like a kind of a chess game to figure out who the right players are and how to, how to get traction on this, but the last block of hours actually was approved, last block, seventy-five hours was approved in the end of two thousand and eighteen, and lasted us up till now, but we're at the end of that, and to kind of try and push, either push this across the finish line, or we, you know, whether it gets passed or not, revisit back in January, based on the results of the election, and determine whether to continue going forward, or what the strategy is, on how to go forward, if it's still viable, if we still have a good chance, we needed to approve an additional block of hours. Our share of this block of hours would be about three thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars, like I said, I would expect it to at least get us through to January or February, worst-case scenario, best-case, we wouldn't even use that much time, and we'd still continue to be able to push on, but we don't pay for it unless we use it, so I would recommend approval of the additional seventy-five hour block of time as presented.
Second.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Ferguson?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Aye.
Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor King?
Aye. Item number twelve, departmental commentary, starting out with our human resources director, Karen Graves, is she in the house?
Hello.
Hello.
I just want to share that we have a bigger influence, part-time supervisory and actually working position, so you will be supervising, but you will also be working, it's in our public service department, as the public service coordinator, we're starting out at seventeen dollars an hour, and it's for a total of twenty-five hours a week, and the person will be helping unify our city and working with public service individuals, so that position is currently available, it's on our website, and we're looking for ambitious and powerful individuals.
All right, thank you very much. Director Iyantin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to remind our CS, and the announcement's coming up, August eighth, the city cleanup date will be there for the twelfth, you have to be there to assist the residents to drop off hires and electronics, and to help get some of the damage and stuff.
Thank you. Director, Director Roberts?
Thank you, sir. I'd like to update council and citizens, I received a phone call this afternoon from the contractor for one seventy-three, I did approve them as the contractor, so now they just have to sign the contracts, and he is anticipating starting the construction for that route mid-October.
That will be absolutely terrific.
Yes, sir.
Progress. Thank you, that's great, that's great news. Administrator Nabel, you have more to say, or are you all, all out of gas?
There's always something left in the tank. I would just remind everyone that we still, that if you haven't heard about it, we have a census, census incentive program, to try and encourage individuals to complete their census, July, August, September, and October, we are doing a drawing for each of those months, the drawing will be the first week of the following month, the end of the month is the deadline to submit your paperwork showing that you completed the census, to be basically entered for a drawing for a one hundred, two hundred, or a three hundred dollar cash gift card. If you do not win, if you complete, you do not win, you roll over, you have a chance in the following month, so the earlier you complete it, the more chances you have, there are flyers in the lobby on where to go, we do have a, a city website now as well, detailing how to enter, how to submit your information, we will also be sending out the flyers in your water bills, but only a third of the city gets a water bill in any given month, so we'll be sending out the July ones this week, then in August and September, but don't wait till you see it in your water bill, try and get your, your entry in now.
And, go ahead, Commissioner Ferguson, have you been receiving many entries, or?
Uh, I mean, I'm not.
And city employees are, are eligible.
Their chances to win are really good.
Yes, city employees and elected officials are not eligible to win, not just city employees, sorry.
Yeah. Give me, the seat.
Yeah, he would be eligible.
All right, there you go.
He is fully volunteered, not a paid employee.
And while we talk about the, the census, and joke about it a little bit, here's how important it is to our community, our community needs funding desperately, and the US government provides over six hundred and seventy-five billion dollars to, to different communities for census, and it helps them to know how many people are in the city, and we can get these funds, and there are four major reasons why we need to complete our census, it helps with our healthcare, better healthcare services, stronger schools, better funding for our schools, improved public transportation for our residents that are, have to work outside of the area, in addition to that, probably really another important thing is home improvement assistance for our residents here. So, if we want to get this money, six hundred, some of that's six hundred and seventy-five billion dollars that's going to other communities, help our city out, participate in the census so that we can have a better Zion to live in. Chief Henderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, this radio I'm holding here looks probably very similar to the radios I've held in the past twelve months, but any of you who've been here for a long have heard me talk about the biggest threat to our officers, say, too, is our communication, when I took, uh...
me talk about the biggest threat to our officers state here is our communication. When I took this appointment in June of last year, and it's come up several times before the council. I want to thank the council for their approval of it, but it was an over $300,000 project to replace our Asian radio system with the state-of-the-art statewide system that we've officially put into practice yesterday. So of that, over $300,000, majority of that was borne by the combined 911 boards of 38 and Zion, saving the taxpayers, that $250,000 of the residents of Zion. And this marks the completion of the five goals I set for my first year as chief, and we finally got this one crossed in the 13th month. I do say it's the one of next, next.
Chief Lewis?
Well, it's nine o'clock, so I won't say a whole lot. And I already got my Blackboard play. Everybody's checking their watch now. Whoa, nine o'clock, nine o'clock's behind ya. I already gave my Blackboard plug, so I'll let that slide. Last thing I'll mention is you may have noticed the Winthorpe Fire Engine running up and down our streets quite a bit in the last few days. That's because we're actually using it. So we have a fire truck that's up at Pierce and Appleton getting refurbished, and then last week we had some electrical issues with our other one, which left us with only one engine in town to protect, and that's just not gonna do it. So our kind neighbors in North Winthorpe loaned us one of their engines to borrow in the meantime. So it's been parked in our station, and we're using it like our own. Anxious to get our own back. Everybody likes driving a rental car around too much. Hopefully, it should be back tomorrow or the next day in good working order, so that's all I can say.
All right. Any of our commissioners have any, any comments? Mayor, were you gonna say something about the Chicago Bears and food and supplies giveaway?
Yeah, I will say that on August 8th, in addition to our Cleanup Day, which go to our website that's been advertised, instead of going down streets as we've done in the past, we're gonna have electronic recycling and picking up the tires, and as Director Iyantin talked about, our crews cleaning up some of the alleyways where people feel compelled to leave tires and other debris that shouldn't be left, too lazy to take to the dump, that stains our neighborhoods. So we're looking forward to the Cleanup Day, but also on that day, we've been working with the school District 6. The Chicago Bears are having a back-to-school function for District 6, and part of that came about as a result of an old friendship from Zion. One of the former, the president of the Bears Alumni Association, Gary Fensick, grew up here in Zion. We were a year apart. We've maintained our friendship over the years, and he called me and said, this year, while they've had this event in different cities in North Chicago, they want it to happen in Zion. I contacted the superintendent of schools, Dr. Keely Roberts, about it. They started working on it with the Bears Group, Marge Hamm, and they needed a place to host us, and they were looking at parking lots, and I called Commissioner McDowell and asked, would the CCC parking lot, could we use that during the day? So they're gonna give out backpacks, sanitizer, school supplies, all kinds of things, masks for our students, and feed families, too. This is in conjunction with the Food Bank. And this is a huge event for our community, and it's one of the things that as, as a mayor, and as a citizen here that has been outside the city and done different things, felt like this was important for, this to happen for our kids and our communities. And things have been working out. It's a, it's a great example of the taxing bodies working to make something happen. Mike, thank you, and CCC, and all of your officers there for the use of your parking lot, and staff for volunteers. If you want to volunteer for this event, we'll find ways with District 6. They're gonna start advertising this, but August 8th, 8 to noon, they're gonna feed a lot of families. And of course, with the pandemic, you know, food, jobs, there are so many things that are crucial. So we're fortunate, we're thankful, and we're fortunate that we've been able to develop these relationships and have friendships over the years that are paying dividends for our community right now. Our citizens deserve it, their parents deserve this, and so do our kids. So it's a great opportunity for exposure. Thank you, Commissioner. The other thing that I want to talk about today is, today I was on a conference call with Senator Durbin and Senator Duckworth about the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Waterway Initiative. And this initiative, they are trying to make sure that communities are getting stimulus funding to deal with erosion issues, number one, and number two, to deal with infrastructure issues. The erosion issue, I can remember growing up here, Commissioner McDowell, you live on Edina. I can remember when at 21st Street, 173, went all the way down to the lake, and there were houses there, and there was beachfront there.
And a nice restaurant.
Very nice restaurant. Erosion has changed that. And the other alarming issue is I talked to this council of mayors that are on this panel. They're from Canada, Michigan, Ohio, Wisconsin, all that are affected by the waterways, the Great Lakes waterways. And one of the things I talked to them about today was the erosion and how it impacts the fact that we have 2.2 million pounds of nuclear fuel rot on our lake. And this is an issue, I said, not just a Zion issue. We talked about the stimulus and getting money from the Stranded Act and the CARES Act, but if something happened, God forbid, and we're between two major metropolitan airports and a regional airport, then you can cancel Christmas for drinking water throughout the entire Great Lakes area. And I think having that conversation and being on this now, probably part of this board, is bringing light to getting funding here that we haven't had access to before. In addition to that, I also talked about the importance of infrastructure, that 60% of our infrastructure, 75 years or older, the other 20% is 100 years or older. We have shovel-ready projects that are ready. We've talked to Congress, we've talked to state officials, we've talked to county. We've been begging for a lot of money as other communities, and having these senators lead this charge, along with the Great Lakes area and the St. Lawrence Waterway Commission working on this with us, give us another tool that we are trying to use to bring resources and money here and get our roads fixed. Commissioner Fisher, I know when you were the Commissioner of Public Works, you talked about the importance of infrastructure and the repair here, making sure that our first responders can get to places without a lot of, without a lot of issues. Repairing so that we can get back and forth in our city, and the people that come through our city will see a different city. So we continue to work on these initiatives and spread our wings to different people that can assist our city in, in getting national funding. I also want to talk just briefly about former police and Commissioner Dave Fisher. Mr. Rogers brought him up tonight, and he was a neighbor of mine, and he said he was a mountain of a man, 6'6", about 250, and one of the nicest people you ever want to meet, but you didn't want to cross him. And he had this great smile that if you were doing something that was wrong in your neighborhood, he had a smile that would disarm you and prevent you from doing things that you probably shouldn't have done. But he was a great neighbor. Outside of being, working for the city, he was one of the neighbors that took pride in his block and in his neighborhood. He mentored kids to make sure that they were addressing adults and respecting adults in the right way, respecting the neighborhood. And one of the things I see is we continue to improve our city, we have to have people like Dave Fisher that are in these neighborhoods that are enforcing that Zion is a great place to live, and if we're going to have, want other people to respect the City of Zion, we're gonna have to show respect for it by ourselves. And that's by taking care of our neighborhoods, taking care of your properties, and of course, now with, I would say, with a new brand of youth, making sure that they address adults in the proper way. I've been told I'm old school, or out of touch, but the one thing I was always taught by my mom, who raised six kids on a six-year education, is you respect your elders. And if you want respect, you've got to earn it before it's given to you as well. So Commissioner Fisher, Officer Fisher, I can't tell you the impact. I can't tell you enough of the impact he had on my life, in knowing that as a police officer coming in our community, he stopped to take time to talk to people. Outside of his uniform, in his uniform, and it made a tremendous difference. I know, Chief, you're doing that with your patrolmen now. They're getting out and they're talking to people in the community, and knowing that you are there to help, and not just there when there's an issue within the neighborhood, but you're there during the good times and making people know that if there's an issue in your neighborhood, call us. Help us police our city, and that's where it all starts. Neighborhood to neighborhood, we've got to have that involvement from different people in the community and help us make our community better. And I've said it once, twice, I'll say it a thousand times. Five people here, the 120 city employees, we need your help to make our city better. We can pass all kinds of resolutions and ordinances, but if we don't get the cooperation from our citizens in helping us, then it's an uphill, it's an uphill battle for us. And we're here to battle.